Agenda, um, let's see. So we're going to need to move the item relating to the valuation of Library Director to immediately follow, that's a closed session, to immediately follow item four, special presentation, recognition of National Friends of Libraries Week.
Are there any objections? None, so moved.
Okay, um. Oh, and then I go to four?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, this is recognition of National Friends of Libraries Week. I would like to invite Library Services Managers Donna Dukes and Cindy Romero to make a presentation and invite Glendora Public Library Friends Foundation Executive Director Maggie Lora up.
Good evening, everyone. So this evening, we are celebrating National Friends of Libraries Week. Glendora is lucky enough to have the GPL Friends Foundation, who was founded over 30 years ago and has donated well over $2 million to the Glendora community through the library. As we enter the Friends of, National Friends of Libraries Week, we want to say thank you. Thank you not only for the funding, but for the support, the partnerships, the volunteering, and all of the, just all of the support that the Friends Foundation provides each and every day. As we look forward to continuing this partnership, we do have a very short video of some pictures of programs that the Friends Foundation has funded over the last year. So this evening, we, we want to say thank you for the learning, for the experiences, and most of all, for the fun, as we look forward to continuing the partnership with the Friends Foundation. And this evening, we're joined by Executive Director Maggie Lora. Maggie? It's all you.
It is a real pleasure to be in your presence and really, other friends of the library. What began in 1964 with a group of friends raising money through book sales and other activities to support the library with books and books on cassette, if you can imagine, has transformed into the Friends Foundation, which in 1994 was started by another group of friends. And so, we've supported the library through all these years. We've provided seed money for some of the new services, if you can imagine, a computer center. And so, we feel very proud about the initiatives that we've been able to fund through the years. But really, I represent our president, Pam Richards, and a team of volunteers. And they really are friends of the community in that they believe in the library so much that they extend their time and treasure to support it, not just for today, but for the next generation. And so, this year, we're funding grants that the library has proposed of more than $108,000 worth of products, I mean, of services and programs. And so, we're excited about where this takes the library for this next year and into the future. We have a long-term commitment, and so, we appreciate the relationships that we have. We feel like we're friends of the library as well in serving your needs. And so, we really appreciate this recognition and this time and this week that we can be acknowledged and acknowledge all the community members that do support the library. So, thank you for this presentation. Thank you for the recognition, and we look forward to our future relationship together. Thank you.
That's a good one. That's a nice one. That's a good one. That's a nice one. How many cameras you got, Kevin? We got two. I should save those in the board folder. No, 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 no. Digital pictures. Okay.
Did, did anybody want to make a comment about National Friends of the Library Week or anything? I would like to make a comment. Maggie, you are amazing. I enjoy talking to you, and I, I'm so proud of everything that you've done and working with the, the board. And Pam Richards is great. So, I, I know that this is going to be a very successful fundraising year for the Friends Foundation. So, great work. Congratulations. And, and you deserve to be acknowledged every day of the year. So, thank you so much.
Great. Okay, I'll just, I have a report later on the actual meeting, but I went to my first Glendora Friends of the Library meeting, and I was amazed how many people were in that room. And, and it's so great to see that dedication to literacy here in Glendora and all the great programs, and thanks for everything you do.
Okay, great. So, I would like to move into closed session. I, I'm going to ask the deputy clerk, a records manager, Verseda, to read the closed session title into the record.
Public Employee Performance Evaluation. A closed session will be held pursuant to Government Code 54957 to discuss evaluation of the position of Library Director. Consultation with City Manager.
I would like to open the public comment period. I'd like to invite members of the public to, well, have we received any, um, public comment?
We have not.
Oh, okay. Never mind. So, I'll close a public comment then. So, then, are we moving into closed session then?
We will now resist the meeting and convene into closed session.
Okay.
I was looking that we skipped all the other things, so I was waiting for board statements and reports.
Oh, it will be after closed session. Okay. All right. So, we'll move into closed session. At 7:10 PM. and most of all, for the fun, as we look forward to continuing the partnership with the Friends Foundation. And this evening, we're joined by Executive Director Maggie Lora. Maggie? It's all you.
It is a real pleasure to be in your presence and really, other friends of the library. What began in 1964 with a group of friends raising money through book sales and other activities to support the library with books and books on cassette, if you can imagine, has transformed into the Friends Foundation, which in 1994 was started by another group of friends. And so, we've supported the library through all these years. We've provided seed money for some of the new services, if you can imagine, a computer center. And so, we feel very proud about the initiatives that we've been able to fund through the years. But really, I represent our president, Pam Richards, and a team of volunteers. And they really are friends of the community in that they believe in the library so much that they extend their time and treasure to support it, not just for today, but for the next generation. And so, this year, we're funding grants that the library has proposed of more than $108,000 worth of products, I mean, of services and programs. And so, we're excited about where this takes the library for this next year and into the future. We have a long-term commitment, and so, we appreciate the relationships that we have. We feel like we're friends of the library as well in serving your needs. And so, we really appreciate this recognition and this time and this week that we can be acknowledged and acknowledge all the community members that do support the library. So, thank you for this presentation. Thank you for the recognition, and we look forward to our future relationship together. Thank you.
Did, did anybody want to make a comment about National Friends of the Library Week or anything?
I would like to make a comment. Maggie, you are amazing. I enjoy talking to you, and I, I'm so proud of everything that you've done and working with the, the board. And Pam Richards is great. So, I, I know that this is going to be a very successful fundraising year for the Friends Foundation. So, great work. Congratulations. And, and you deserve to be acknowledged every day of the year. So, thank you so much.
Great. Okay, I'll just, I have a report later on the actual meeting, but I went to my first Glendora Friends of the Library meeting, and I was amazed how many people were in that room. And, and it's so great to see that dedication to literacy here in Glendora and all the great programs, and thanks for everything you do.
Okay, great. So, I would like to move into closed session. I, I'm going to ask the deputy clerk, a records manager, Verseda, to read the closed session title into the record.
Public Employee Performance Evaluation. A closed session will be held pursuant to Government Code 54957 to discuss evaluation of the position of Library Director. Consultation with City Manager.
I would like to open the public comment period. I'd like to invite members of the public to, well, have we received any, um, public comment?
We have not.
Oh, okay. Never mind. So, I'll close a public comment then. So, then, are we moving into closed session then?
We will now resist the meeting and convene into closed session.
Okay.
I was looking that we skipped all the other things, so I was waiting for board statements and reports.
Oh, it will be after closed session. Okay. All right. So, we'll move into closed session. At 7:10 PM.
I would, like, let me see, like to reconvene the meeting back into session at 8:17 PM. Deputy City Clerk, Records Manager, could you please report out from closed session?
A privileged and confidential briefing was held and there was no reportable action taken.
Okay, thank you. So now it is time for the pledge. Trustee Johnson, would you like to do the pledge?
I would be honored.
Okay.
For asking.
All right.
Please rise, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Johnson.
My pleasure.
Well done. Okay, all right. So does anyone wish to reorder or add to the agenda? Okay, looking good. I'd like to open up public comment period. Has anyone submitted public comment requests?
No president.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment period. Any of the board members wish to make a board statement or a report? Okay, right. So go ahead, Deborah Hall.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I did attend the Battle of the Books, the fracas in the Forum back in September. Had not been before. Of course, it wouldn't be possible unless we didn't have the support of the Glendora Public Library Friends Foundation. And there were so many of them there running the night. It was fantastic. But it was great to walk in to see eight teams, four of them from Goddard where I teach. Six of those little guys I've taught, one currently I'm teaching. And then, of course, Goddard took first and second place. So that was really fun to see as well. I did take all of the names back to the staff at Goddard so they could all send their own well wishes to those students who worked really hard. And when I asked my one student who's a sixth grader, I said, so you read three books? Do you just, you know, each read one? Well, no, we read all three. I read two of them four times. And then the one I really needed to know, I read seven times. I'm like, okay, here's an A and another one. So it was really fun to see. I loved how it was put on. I would love to see an increase in teams. And I also really appreciated that it was beyond the borders of the city of Glendora. We had several San Dimas, a little guy who went to the high school down in Fullerton. And then some Charter Oak kids, and which I like, I really enjoyed seeing that. So far reaching out. So well done. I will go back.
Thank you, trustee Hall. Anybody else want to make a comment? Trustee Johnson?
I would like to share that trustee Long and myself both attended the community day at Citrus College, which was spectacular. It was a great pleasure to see the variety of programs, the exceedingly high quality of all of the programs. The staffing was absolutely phenomenal. So to fully understand just all of the reach of all of their programs and what they do at Citrus College was very enlightening to me. And I am very proud to live in a city that has such an amazing college embedded in the city. It's a real gift to the city of Glendora.
Thank you, trustee Johnson. Okay, Vice President Vogel?
Okay, so I just wanted to compliment the staff on all the programs they ran over the summer. And I got to see their banned books display, their bulletin board, and that was really cute. And there's a picture of it in here. On October 7th, I went to the Glendora Public Library Friends Foundation meeting. Of course, at the time, and so some of the things that they talked about last week, of course, was Friends of the Library Week. We went to the city council meeting with them. They have a volunteer luncheon next week, which we all know about. And if you were planning to, RCP, today's the last day. And it's actually Wednesday, I guess. Yeah. At the holiday stroll, they were going to have a donor event with In-N-Out, a photo booth, face painting, and more, which I don't, is that the first year they've done that?
So this is the first year that the Friends Foundation has been a part of it. It's in partnership with Visiting Angels. The Friends Foundation and Visiting Angels have a relationship, and so they're partnering to put on that event. So it is the Friends Foundation's first.
Okay, because it didn't sound like they had, sort of sounded like to happen before, but I wasn't sure. Thank you for the clarification. Tanya Sims was appointed the Vice President of Fund Development. And Adam updated the foundation on the search for a new library director. That'll be starting hopefully, I guess, after the first of the year. And then they had pictures of proposed libraries. We didn't get to see them because they took them to another meeting. But, I mean, they were there, but we didn't get to go look at them. But they have obviously a lot of ideas and plans. And it's been in progress for a long time. So they're looking at the next steps. The annual campaign has begun. And they are hoping for 100% participation by December 31st, because that really helps with the grants. And the trivia competition is in March, and they are looking for teams. And thank you for the stickers, library. And the next board meeting is, for Library Friends, is January 27th. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Vice President Vogel. Great work. Yes, trustee Long?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend a program offered by the library on Saturday. It was Marvelous Monarchs, and it was lovely. It's up at Big Dalton Park, Canyon Park. And I was surprised how busy it was up there. You could hardly find a parking place. There are so many people enjoying the park. But it was a wonderful program. It was led by Sue Griffin, who she was the monarch ambassador. And it was just perfect for adults, kids, everyone. She gave so much information. The staff was very gracious and included me, and I was able to do the little craft that they offered as well. And it was a great experience. And I was happy to see a program that our library and the friends are also supporting. So I also encourage everyone to just check out the city website and look for activities that are going on through the library, because there's so much being offered. And so I encourage everyone to make sure they know what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Long. And then I just have a couple of things to say. First of all, shortly, very soon, I am going to be taking the haunted tour in honor of the spookiest month of the year, Halloween in October. So this will be fun times. Stop number one is country club. So, and then it goes on from there. So I'm very excited. So that will be great. Be like cruising around, looking at everybody's decorations. I too also attended Battle of Books, very well attended, very impressed. That was, it was great. I was really, really happy about that. And then it's, I honestly was curious about the, how the library did after the three inches of rain. You know, so I mean, I walk in there and see any new leaks or, you know, is it a steady flow or just a trickle or a spit? I don't, I don't know. So I was curious about that.
Well, good to see you all again. Thank you for asking. We have no new leaks. We have the same.
Recurring leaks that we've had for years now. Public Works was great. They were checking in on us all the time. We had lots of buckets out. Catching the water. But so it's, it's just the usual. Nothing, nothing new, unfortunately.
The leaks are like your old friends at this point.
Pretty much. It kind of depends on how much rain we get. We'll get the leak here that we haven't seen in a while and get a new one over here. So unfortunately, we are, we are used to it. So there's no new ones.
Hey, cool.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And I just wanted to congratulate the Friends Foundation for being recognized again by the city council as well as here. And I wanted to throw in, I had the opportunity to meet Sugar. And so Sugar is the Glendora Police Department Facility Dog. And she was making appearance at Classic Coffee today between noon and four. And they were handing out stickers and the little cards, and she had her patches on. And I picked up a patch over at the Glendora Police Department for $10, the Sugar Patch. And I went and affixed the back of it with Velcro, and it's now on Elvis's harness. And he's going to be cruising around with his little honorary Sugar badge on. So it's very, very cute. And I also love the new library stickers. So cute. I stick them, I stuck them on there so I could remember. I don't know if they'll come off. They'll just stay there. So, okay. So that is good. Thank you. So next is the report of the library director and library divisions. I would like to invite library services managers Donna Dukes and Cindy Romero to report.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Thanks for having us on the dais with you tonight. So there is our regular director report in your packet. There are some updates to some things that have happened since the report was published. So I will start there. Although I would also like to mention, trustee Vogel, to your point, the renderings are actually available in a city council packet online. So if you are interested in viewing those, you could view them that way as well. So. September 9th, okay, on that date. Okay, so our, the first biggest update, and some of you may have heard, is that our vendor, Baker &amp; Taylor, which is our primary distributor for library materials, as it is for most libraries across the nation, has announced that it will be closing its doors as of January 2026. So it does impact multiple areas of the library across divisions. So that includes our selecting, our purchasing, and our pre-processing, which you'll note in the packet in the director's report. I had mentioned that the Young Adult Fiction Collection would start being pre-processed and sent to us that way. That is no longer the case. We will not be moving forward with any pre-processing at the moment. The good news is, is that multiple vendors have reached out to us to offer other solutions. Cindy and I met with two of them last week, Barnes &amp; Noble and Ingram. And the early-stage solution looks like a composition of a variety of vendors. So kind of mixing and matching depending on, depending on our needs. Ingram does offer a, an option for pre-processing. However, as you can imagine, lots of libraries are onboarding with this vendor. And so because of that, we cannot opt into pre-processing until the beginning of 2026, like, more like March 2026. But we do have, we do have them available for continuing to purchase materials, so. And Baker &amp; Taylor will be at CLA, which we are attending on Friday, to hopefully answer some questions, as will those, those other vendors that I mentioned, who will hopefully be able to meet some of those service needs that we have, so.
I'd just like to say that Glendora is actually in a very good place. There are some libraries that have, that no longer have the staff that can catalog or process their materials themselves, because they have outsourced all of that to vendors like Baker &amp; Taylor. Luckily, we have not moved that direction. We've always just maintained to have at least some staff that could, that could do those functions. So we will just continue to do a little bit more of it in the interim, until we're able to get some of those solutions back up online.
I also noted in the director's report that we were in the process of purchasing two new self-checkout machines, as our current ones have reached their end of life and will no longer be serviced by Invisonware. We did get a date for those, and those will be arriving on Monday, November 3rd. And our IT department will be onsite to help us with that installation. I had the leaks on here, but we, I think we've covered that. And then I also noted that, we noted that the mobile app can send alerts when you open it now. It can also, we've also gotten it to the stage where if you do owe fines or fees, you can actually, there's a pay fines feature now in, via the mobile app, too. So hopefully, that sort of adds to the customer service experience. Those are my updates.
So just a reminder that California Library Association Conference is this week. So I know we'll be seeing many of you out there on Friday. So we'll look forward to seeing you there. Donna and I will also be at the California State Library Director's Retreat on Wednesday. They've allowed for two, two members from each library to be there. So we will both be representing Glendora and Riverside on Wednesday. But for those of you that'll be at CLA, please make sure you try, you know, say hi or grab our cellphones and, you know, just, we may see you in some sessions along the way. So, and our entire staff will be out. And just a reminder for the community that the library will be closed on Friday as we attend that staff development day. I was lucky enough to get to serve as a principal for the day with Glendora Unified School District. I got to go hang out at La Feta for a morning. And I got to visit all of the classrooms. And, you know, like you said, with, with different things, it is so impressive to see all of what's going on in those classrooms. And the teachers and what they're doing and what the students are up to. It was, I got to visit all 28 classrooms. It was great. We moved. Because we, we were done in an hour and a half. We, we moved a little bit. The, the city participated in the Great Shakeout last Thursday for earthquake preparedness and just an earthquake drill. So the library did evacuate at 10:16. And following that, Donna Elke and I reported up to the city's Emergency Operations Center, where we had a drill of a 7.0 earthquake in Pasadena and how to get the Emergency Operations Center up and running. So all three of us serve on that, on that team. And Gabby mans the library downstairs. She keeps everything running downstairs if we're upstairs. And just the last thing, as one of our Friends Foundation grants this year was a new kitchen cart with a kitchen demonstration cart that will allow for, it's the demo cart plus 10 setups so that we can have classes. That will be arriving at the library tomorrow. So, don't come see it tomorrow. I'll let you know when it's, when it's okay to come see it. But, so that will be arriving. So stay tuned and keep your eyes open for programming that will include a new kitchen cart. I think those are our updates, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? Trustee Hall?
What programs do you foresee including with the kitchen cart? What have you seen out there?
So there's one that the staff has started working on that's going to be kind of a play on history, cooking, culture, and spices around the world. The first session's going to be a horchata session, and then a sourdough. And then she's working on, I can't remember what the rest of them were. I'm sorry.
Seasonally, monthly?
We're going to be looking at least monthly. Probably two programs a month with different things. Some of it may be a, come learn how to cook this particular thing. Others may be just demonstrations where it's not as hands-on. And so we've, the staff with the kitchen cart that we're purchasing, we also have purchased a curriculum. So once we get the cart tomorrow, we'll be able to unlock the curriculum. We have to have the serial number of the cart to do that. And so then the staff will begin taking a look at the different types of things that we can offer. But we are looking all over the place. A lot of culture and history sorts of programs, but then just some basics as well.
For adults?
Adults and kids.
So would the cart, would that be taking place, like, on weekends? So.
We'll have a mix.
People that could attend?
We'll have a mix of things.
Okay. All right. Cool. Does anybody else have a question? Or? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next is the consent calendar for items number five and six. Items on the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion without individual discussion unless a trustee has requested it be removed for separate discussion. Does anyone wish to poll or comment on any consent item? Okay. So, no one has requested anything to be polled. So I would like to request a motion that we approve the consent calendar. Anybody like to make? Okay. So we have Vice President Tricia Vogel has, has made the motion. Mm-hmm. And.
I move to accept the consent calendar.
Nice. Okay.
I get a second?
A second.
Okay. If you can please vote. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next is new business. Presentation of Cost Allocation Plan and User Fee Study Results. So I would like to invite library services manager Donna Dukes to report.
Thank you. So originally, this presentation was going to be given by one of the members of our finance team. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it tonight. So please bear with me as we go through this, as she is the one that compiled this information. So at the end, I will do my best to answer any questions you may have. So the last comprehensive fee study for the city, so this is a citywide fee study. And so the last comprehensive study for the city was conducted in 2003. So in April of 2025, the city entered into an agreement with the Matrix Consulting Group. And limited adjustments have been made to select fees to ensure compliance, transparency, and fiscal, and fiscal responsibility. The objectives of the study were to streamline our fee structure, to incorporate time assumptions, to include fully burdened hourly rates, to ensure legal compliance, to be comparative, and so that we could update the city's master fee schedule. This is the formula that, and methodology that they use to calculate the fees. You can, you can see here. And the results specifically for the library were that our total revenue is just over $32,000, and our total annual cost is over $66,000. So the difference is a little over $34,000, and our cost recovery percentage is 49%. So some key updates for the library. We updated some meeting and event space fees to, to reflect actual staff time and facility costs. And then for damaged and lost materials, it's updated in this study to align with actual replacement or repair costs. But this was actually something that we had brought to a couple of months ago when we updated our circulation policy. And it was more that we were charging a particular fee, and it just wasn't reflected correctly in, in the documents. So that's what that is. So the next steps, there is a public hearing scheduled for November 12th, 2025. And the city's going to adopt an annual fee escalator to ensure annual cost increases keep up with fee increases. And then fees will be reevaluated again in five to seven years based on organizational and technological changes. And so our recommendation is that the library Board of Trustees provide any direction to staff relating to library fees and receive and file Cost Allocation Plan and User Fee Study prepared by Matrix Consulting Group. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Comments? Okay. So I would like to request a motion to approve a presentation of Cost Allocation Plan and User Fee Study results. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll second. Who made the motion?
No one yet.
A motion.
Okay. To approve.
To approve. Is there anyone second?
I would like to second.
Okay. Please vote. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is to review, review of City Administrative Policy 4.05, policy concerning collection development. And I would like to invite library services manager Cindy Romero to report.
Good evening again. Thank you. So tonight, we are going to be talking about the Library Administrative Policy 4.05, the policy concerning our collection development. This policy is really the policy that helps to guide both the books that we choose for the library, anything that we choose to weed from the library, and also just to defend intellectual freedom and defend against censorship. So this, the library board continuously reviews all of the library policies for accuracy and currency. This just happens to be the next one on the list. Some of the background, the last time this policy was before the Board of Library Trustees was in 2022. And the board approved it based on recommendations from the staff. More recently, a year ago in September of 2024, the state of California passed some legislation called the Freedom to Read Act, requiring specific updated language be added to all collection development policies of public libraries in the state, and then our policies to be sent to them for verification. So what we've done is typical, typical of what we do with the policies, we reviewed the current policy. In this specific instance, we reviewed the state mandated language. We reviewed our files. We took a look and conducted a review of other neighboring libraries, as well as best practices from the American Library Association. With all of those together, the recommendations that we, that you have before you include adding the California Freedom to Read Act language that is required by the state mandate, consolidating some of the redundant sections, adding language for local author material, third-party resources, and resources generated by artificial intelligence, and then adjusting for current practices. There is no fiscal impact associated with the recommendations. And our recommendation is that the library Board, Board of Library Trustees approve Library Administrative Policy 4.05, policy concerning collection development as presented. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. So there are none. I would like to request a motion to approve the review of City Administrative Policy 4.05, policy concerning collection development. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move to accept policy 4.05. Just went away. Concerning collection development.
I would like to second.
Okay. So the motion was made by Vice President Vogel and seconded by trustee Johnson.
Please vote. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And next is board or staff closing comments. Would anybody happen to have any closing comments or anything up here? Nothing? Staff? Any comments?
See, on Friday, many of you.
Oh, I don't get to go.